All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's seven o'clock. And if you haven't had a chance to look at the minutes yet, please do that. And I'd like to take a motion for accepting them.
I made a motion to accept the minutes.
It was quick. It's in a second.
Second.
Comments, questions, changes? Obviously a pretty small session. Pretty small. Questions, Tom? You ready?
Yeah, please.
All the neighbors? Two, three, four? Okay, we have a couple gentlemen here who are going to speak about a subdivision up on Buzzard Road. And...
Yes, come right up here if you want.
You can follow along, I guess, either on the screen or perhaps we have copies.
Would you like me to set the board up?
Whatever it is you see.
It's easy. I'll have it at least set up.
And we got a pointer for you if you want to use the screen too.
Can't get out of the corral here.
Watch where I go. You gotcha. It's the family-style meeting.
You have your hand up.
I have a copy of the three.
Those are just the emails, so if you want to give them what you've got.
Yeah, this is the same thing, but it just kind of a little bit.
It's just the whole board, you know?
We're missing three, right?
One, two, three. So this is the seven altogether?
Yeah.
Five actual members and then two alternates. Oh, good. So there's five hopes typically in a normal meeting. There's more people there than just three. We have four or five.
So we've been working with Mr. Mattel, he's been in two years now on the parcel on Youngs Ridge. He bought two lots a couple of years ago.
Is it one, two, yeah? Yeah, okay.
I was gonna s- I thought it was more of a...
Yeah, I thought it was three or something. Originally, three lots?
Uh, three years.
No, three years, sorry.
So we've got two lots out there. What's the acreage total? It is eighty-two acres.
Eighty-eight? Uh, total is eighty-eight. Eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine. How big is the Buzzard Road site?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. And then the balance is on the Youngs Ridge road.
Actually, the Buzzard site is forty-two and then forty-seven on the...
So he's proposed a few lots going down the Buzzard Road area with some open space behind it. But then eventually, he's trying to do something on this parcel here. So he wanted to talk Phase One, that's really what he's looking at doing. But he also didn't want the board to think he's doing something over here and just surprise you after Phase One's done that there could be a Phase Two in the future. He's been working on, basically, we've just called it a driveway coming in here. He's worked over that. He's reclaimed the field that was here, removed the trees, and revegetated the field that was out there. How many adds of loom did you bring in for that field?
I don't know what it's costing me. You know, I... Well, when I first started the project, I took the old farmhouse signs. It was in rough shape. My goal was to maybe clean it up and rehab it. But just move along and just the shape it was in, why couldn't I spend a half a million dollars in there and I still would have an old house? So, uh, and I decided just to, uh, we tore it down, but most of the stuff I gave to all the neighbors, whoever wanted anything. You know, just to keep it the family. So I ended up giving a lot of the stuff away, whatever's left to be tore down. But when I tore that down, I didn't have enough loom over there. So I, I, like a hundred, with the truck in there, that was like a hundred and twenty grand. I can figure out the addage if I took a minute here. But I had to do that because, you know, working with Ken's been great, but there wasn't enough loom to rehab and seed it right away because I wanted to seed it, you know, until I got further down. So I really had, I had to put the horse before the cow on that one or the other way. I ended up loomming the whole thing and, uh, and so that's quite a little loom we hold in, yeah.
This was the old way down to the lake here. The new satellites probably would show the driveway he's put kind of rolls over this way. Again, the focus was on the lots coming down through Buzzard Road. How many lots were proposed on that?
Seven, seven lots.
Yep, with open space behind it, which really brings this property line here as being relocated over, I would assume somehow, you know? And we've been kicking it around. Do we do both at the same time? Do we do one? Do we do the other? With cluster, we've talked cluster quite a bit. And I think this is probably the first time in a long time that we're using a town road for all our road frontage. So he doesn't have to build a lot on this one here. Some of the concepts, this is just traditional subdivision here, two fifty, two acres, right up through the area. This must be the existing property line?
It is, yeah.
This one here, the open space comes in between each lot on this concept, Concept Two, which we talked about it, and he wants to be able to control the buffer between the houses so that people can't cut all the trees. And I thought this concept worked out pretty good. This is a fifty-foot buffer and befoom each one. This reduces lot size down, road frontage is reduced a little bit also. So we're at a point where we're looking for planning board guidance. So once he gets a feel for which direction the planning board wants him to go, they can start doing test pits and things like that. The concern was if we assume the planning board wants one versus the other, we'll have two test pits on one lot and none on the other. But I think three is just cluster reduced without the buffers in it.
Yeah, so now we're down with those lots, or one big lot. Seven acres of open space in there, a buffer there. That less kind of surrounds it.
Got all the seven acres right here. And this gave a buffer from, this is a residence here, and you got a few across the street though.
Sort of like cluster hybrid.
Yeah. I guess I'm looking at these today, and I spent some time this afternoon with a different map. I guess the first question that jumped out at me was, what's the reason behind going cluster? Well, I'll be honest with you, Dave. Well, Ken brought it up. That's why I said you should...
The ordinance says the town's really pushing cluster. And you need to come in with a plan, cluster, and a traditional plan. And then the planning board would say, we're going with cluster. And I think when we're looking at the big lot, cluster makes sense there too. But sometimes, like this one here, maybe the board would say, cluster doesn't make any sense. It's let's go traditional with this. So in the past, the board has pushed the clusters. And the developers seem to like it a little bit if they're building roads because like a plantation drive, we turned a two-thousand-foot road into seven-hundred feet. And it keeps everybody into one neighborhood. And then the balance of open space is out there for, as is.
And assuming this were to go cluster from now on, would you foresee the land in the back, the open-space land, remain under the order of the property's control, your case? Or would it become an association that would take care of it? In a perfect world, what I'd like to do with this, I like the concept of one is what I like. I like the two-acre zone. Okay? The two-hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage. Okay? Why? I just like, I just like the little bit bigger lots. Three is definitely, I don't like it at all. Because now you've got a row of houses on top of each other. I just don't like it, you know? I want to do the right thing. That's how I feel. I take, when I do projects, I take, I take it to heart. I think like I'm up here doing this and I'm leaving. I'm gonna be up here, I'm gonna be moving up here, my family compound. I really don't like the concept of that. And I like the second one, like I was talking to Ken about it. So I have some control where I want to leave, I want to leave trees in between each lot. So it's nice, you know? But now you get the small lots. So at the same time, I go back to Concept One, where I can still control this because I can put in the deeds. I like the bigger lots better because it gives you more spread up of the houses, okay? And now I did some research for this. I can take the lot line and put a no-cut zone in and put it into the deed where they can't cut twenty-five feet from the lot line on each side. So now I'm protected, you people protected, the neighbors are protected. So somebody can't come in and just clear a cut right to the lot line. Because that's what I don't want, you know what I mean? Because it's just for aesthetics. And then you cut along the roadway. My goal is just to tour down along the roadway, cut out some of the dead stuff, and mulch it. That's what I'm gonna do, and the same thing in between. So that's gonna really cover the same thing as doing the cluster on Concept Two, where you get the small lot. Somebody wants to build a house with the two-car garage attached, they get a little bit more breathing room. And it does look like they're on top of each other. That's the look I don't want. Now, if you guys want it, I don't think you would, but for the same thing. Because once looking for my house on the other side, I can look across and I don't want to see that, houses in a row. So my opinion, I think that's the best concept where I can control it. And I think that's the beauty of it today because if you sell a lot to somebody and then they do something you wish you never did. So I can control that open space look. But instead of opening up a can of worms with everybody else that wants to develop or do something, keep it the way it is with the town road on those seven lots to keep the two, two-hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage. But put stipulations, they cannot cut the trees. You can even put it, hey, you want to cut a tree, you go back to planning board. Not that I want to put the burden on you people either, or Ken, I know everybody's busy. But once it's there, they can't, you know, they really can't do it. I can work it any way, you know, if you work, you know? So, and I want to be a good neighbor to you people, but you gotta, evidence will be right. But I do like the concept, the first concept, and then the rest of the land on the back of those lots. The rest of that land, I'm gonna take and add that all to the piece on the left on Youngs Ridge Road. And then I want to take and make that all open space. But I don't see that in Plan One. I see it in Plan Two, and I see it in Plan Three where you have the boundaries set up. But I don't see any change in Plan One.
Well, there'll be actually a lot line adjustment. This line in the middle will disappear.
That will be gone.
So the remaining land will become part of that parcel on Youngs Ridge Road.
And where would you anticipate that line to be?
Right behind the lots.
Right behind the seven lots. Just like it is, let's say, in two or less yet?
So this right here, this line right here.
The three, I mean?
There you go, yeah.
Right on that line.
This line disappears.
Yep.
This line becomes the new line.
Right.
Forty-two acres now becomes this twenty-eight acres of open space.
Well, that's gonna, now it's gonna be, I'm gonna merge it with the big piece on the left on Youngs Ridge. Then when I sit down and talk to people about doing something on Youngs Ridge, now that's, eventually that's gonna be all open space.
And that's gonna stay open space?
Yes. Yep.
Wouldn't that have to stay with this subdivision?
No.
In order to be a cluster?
I'm not doing...
What was this?
This wouldn't be a cluster, you'd say?
This is not a cluster. No, this meets the regulations, but...
Or just a...
Two acre, yeah.
I think I can control the tree cutting and the setback setting from the road in between the lots. Place in deeds, which is only seven lots. And I think that would be the best concept for that Buzzard Road area instead of having houses on top of each other. Because I even came in on the bigger piece with a, with a cluster. So eventually, most of that land in the middle is gonna be all open space.
So this line right here is not the property line way over here? That's, this line would be in this area here?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So you'll go behind those seven lots, right about where Ken is right now. That's gonna be all left open space.
And then on the second, the second lot, how many are you anticipating at some point throwing in there?
Twenty. But it's gonna be a cluster. It's gonna be a cluster, it'll be one acre lots. And you have to give all the rest of the land open space.
How many of those are gonna have water rights?
Well, I haven't got really that far with it yet. I got three lots on the water. I haven't got that far yet. I'm still doing some research on it.
For a waterfront access, you need a full-size lot, two acres, two fifty. And then every time you give rights, it's another twenty-five feet. So it really limits the, um, the old way was a ten-foot wide right-of-way and all the back lots got to use the right-of-way. And there's not even enough room for a dock down here or anything like that. So that's why that ordinance was changed.
So this property that we're talking about that potentially would become open space, is that a wooded area? Is that a forested area? Well, right now it is pretty much down the middle of both pieces, still wooded. I'm grassing right now. My goal in life is to have all of Buzzard Road where it's cut right now, that's gonna be field. I want to grass it. I like the looks of the grass. There's a lot of dead trees in there. And what I'm doing now is on my side on Youngs Ridge, well, I'm sure you guys have seen how much, how much grass. I was down there for the first time about, I don't know, three weeks ago. I was kind of shocked at what I was looking at. I had no idea what was... Yeah. It used to be field G F A go, and it matches the horn property next door. But whatever's cut there is gonna be grass in field. I got a few people that came up to me to, you know, they like to cut it. They want to cut the grass for the animals and stuff. And that's my goal, to have that look going down, going down on my side. And the same thing with you.
Are you done with hayfields?
Yes. I've talked to a few guys, you know, there's a lot of grass to cut. They're all for it, they like it, I want to put some nice feeder plots out there for animals. You know, I'm saying twenty lots, but my goal in life, I'm not developing it. I want to get it for my grandkids. This is gonna be a family compound. I'm not coming up going out twenty, thirty houses and leaving. Okay? That's not, that's not, that's not my intentions. I wouldn't be, if that was my intention, building a twenty-lot subdivision, I wouldn't be spending, I spent a quarter of a million dollars just grassing what I already did. Am I crazy? I'm starting to think so. But that's, that's the look I want, you know what I mean? So I spent, I spent a ton. And I'm not even, I didn't, it's expensive to do, you know? Rip all the, you know, dead trees, the stumps, screen all the loom and put it back and seed it. That's kind of a quarter of a million dollars, easy, you know? But that's the look I'm looking for. So anything that you see that's been cut and stuff, or whatever's gonna be cut, is going to be all field. And like I said, I have a bunch of farmers approaching me and they say, what are you gonna do? Can we cut? I said, no problem. Dave Laney was one of them, and they're all you got. That's the concept I like. And I said, well, let's get together, tell me what kind of oats, what kind of seeds you guys want. Not knowing that I was spending, I don't know, fifty grand on seed, but I mean, wait a minute. I'm putting up chaffy after these guys. But it's faster, and I lived a lot, you know, oats, and it looks, it looks beautiful. But that's, if you look at Breckett Farm going towards poor people's pub on the left, I've become a citizen since I've been five years old. That's why I know what's going on in the area. I used to come right around the corner there. But that's the, that's the, that's the look I want. And that's my intentions on this. And that's why I wanted to get approved. Approved now, but I forget if I died tomorrow. But it's gonna be, I have five grandkids, I got three kids. I got sister and two brothers, so they're gonna take a lot, I'm giving them to free. Because they've been up the hill to be working and, uh, so they're getting three lots right on Buzzard Road. So I can control them. But that's my goal, is to have the, is to have the twenty lots and not build it. I might, I might build a house on the water with my son. It's funny, because my wife wants to be on the water, and now he's waited. I want to be up top. And Ken knows that, I'm gonna blue that house or give it away. I want to build something different. There's plenty of margin I built to live in while I developed this piece. Until I build a house on the water, I want to be up the hill. I want to be up there. So we're flipping the coin, if you want to get on the bottom of the hill, you know, I'd rather be up on top. I've been saying that to Ken, you know? I get the best of both worlds, so, but that's my goal. So don't let twenty lots be...
Brad, how deep are these lots on Concept Two?
Concept Two must be three hundred or so? I suppose I could have divided that by two hundred. Yeah, they're, uh... So it's fifteen hundred square feet roughly?
It's gonna be close to two hundred, I mean, three hundred. I don't think it's to scale.
It's like a half-scale one, too.
An inch to two hundred feet, I don't see that. Ken, if you could give us a rough figure of the shore frontage that would be applicable here based on...
I think about three hundred and eighty-deep.
Three eighty-deep?
Yeah.
So almost twenty thousand, almost a half acre in Concept Two of this open space coming in between it. We've done the no-cuts in between the two houses. And of course, it's all cut by the time somebody calls us. They don't call and tell us it's being cut during it. And we've had people where the parents live in one house and the kids live in the other, and they want to cut it, grass in between. And, you know, we put regulations on the no-cut. The no-cut's hard, I think, for the town to enforce. But if this was, had this finger of, um, open space conservation, then it's the keeper of the conservation's job to, it's not their property, they can't cut it.
Well, they, you know, they pretty much, yeah, they can't. But they almost do the same thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But when it's in the deed...
But then you get to yell at them.
I, well, either that, now they gotta replace it. It's easier to replace it if it's in the deed, you know? This is what I do back at home, this is what I do for a business, you know? And, uh, and so I'm familiar how to talk to people, treat people, and what, how people, I want to say, own, take ownership. So you gotta, it's pretty much etched in stone. Like I said, I want to be a good neighbor to you people. I don't want somebody coming up here and saying, hey. And I'm not, that's not me, I don't want to fucking, this is your backyard, you know what I mean? So I want to be a good neighbor. And that's why I'm here, I asked Ken, so those haven't been, so you guys can send me the right direction. That's because I'm spending a lot of money with this guy right here, that's gonna be for the left. But, um, so, but it goes, man, concept one's good, concept two is good to...
About a thousand feet of waterfrontage?
Um, yeah.
It's a little low because it's, I think it's eleven hundred feet.
It's like building here?
Yeah, especially that peninsula.
And through there.
So what are we using, roughly, for that?
Eleven hundred?
Roughly.
Eleven, yeah.
So he's got way more than would be necessary for twenty-three plus or minus units?
That's the Phase Two part, and we don't have plans for that yet. But we have talked, and the plans I've seen had three lots. So there's seven fifty gone right there. So that would leave you a balance of three fifty.
Three lots right on the water.
Would be a second lot, and maybe two or three back lots would have access to it if that's the route they went.
Time, let me just understand what you said there. Three proposed lots, shore front lots. And then the remainder would be allocated to a necessary shore front for cluster, is that...
For rights for back property, which would probably be two to three. And that hasn't changed for a while. As far as some of the other options we've talked about, that changes quite often. And that's why we're just trying to get a concept from the planning board, what they, a direction for the seven lots on Buzzard tonight. Now, there's nothing stopping you from making bigger open space, except if you run out of space in lots.
I was just gonna ask about the, like, is there a ratio for this cluster in terms of percentage of open?
Yeah, it's gonna be over fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Over fifty. And typically, the ones that are set up in here are just over fifty. They've got, you know, you went through it and got it, you know, a tenth or whatever more. And that's, you know, they seem to fit the whole thing when I was looking at it anyway.
But of course, those lots could be put out to less than an acre in size if you build a cluster first.
What kind of land are we talking about over here? I mean, I see you have building envelopes kind of, you know, in here. Are they truly all buildable areas within the lots?
That's very nice, we're on the Buzzard Road, as you're asking.
It's all pretty flat.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, and it does drop, you can see with the corner.
I don't mind it.
Yeah, I see you.
If anything, but up top here where the houses we built, there's a lot of level land.
So here's the contour maps here, twenty-foot contours. So it's running fairly good here. Resource protection overlays on it, so there's no R P in this area. And I haven't reread the ordinance for a while, but you don't want somebody given all the open space to junk land they can't build on. This is a little wet down through here, this is sloppy, but it's, this area could be developed if you wanted to or had to.
Yeah, well, it's cleared up here on the right on Buzzard Road right there. I have another concept of plan that I can put a road in there, put more lots in there. But once again, I just want to do something nice and clean looking. And I even, I'm gonna tell you this right now, even where you live on Lightning Shore there. I even thought if it was worth it, I mean, I don't want to scare everybody away. Maybe if you guys want to have a road come back out through my, I've been beating this thing, like, I probably spent thirty grand with this guy. I liked it, but thought that's not gonna work that much. But I didn't even have a plan of a road coming out with lots going all the way out, coming back out to Buzz, Buzz Road. And then I talked to Ken about it. I said, you know, I don't want to open a can of worms, and next year I gotta even be fighting and stuff.
Well, we have a, we have a turnaround.
Yeah, right, yes, right, right. I thought maybe, maybe if you people still, look at it, let's make it so that, you know, I can make it so I give you guys some land, we get out the road, come back out that way. It's good for, you know, the antlers, the fire department, or anything. And if you guys say, hey, we like that concept, I'm willing to do something like that till we lay it out that way. It's more expensive for me because they're gonna put a road in. Or we can leave it like this. I mean, if I had a lot over there, I'd like to cut right through there, through the city, go all the way around. But that's just food for thought. You know, you guys might laugh at me, or like, or keep it the way it is. So I said, you know what?
So instead of a dead end on Langley, or come back up and come up through here?
Instead of going all the way around the road to get back over to the other side? It's just food for thought.
I, my husband's treasurer of the association, so I can, I can float that by him and...
I've got a plan, but I don't have it with me.
See if, that's something that the board wants to turn around.
Sure, it will work, but we'll get a plan on that.
Yeah, we could.
And then I have, and I have lots open, having a road going down and hooking on a lane on the dot circle. I've talked to Pat, the guy, the gentleman that lives in Conkey Mass, I've got ahold of him. And I told him, no matter what I do, I'm gonna, I'll come and see you. And like I said, I want to be a good neighbor. I want to knock everybody's doors when I bought this piece, is what I did. But we can connect that right through there. And then like Brad says, well, what do you want to do with it? I just don't want to rattle you people. But it's great food for thought if you want to go that way, you know what I mean? I like it because, God forbid, somebody's sick and having an heart attack, you go all the way around that road. But that's an option that I can offer to you people at my expense. And instead of having, then I think I get five or six lots, five lots on Buzzard. Then the road comes through, hooks to that circle, and you get a couple on that, on that road going around. So there's a couple of different, you don't have a plan like you...
I don't, I don't think I have that particular... This was the open target, we were trying to try to fixate tonight and focus on, but it seems like we're still gonna have a plan.
It's just, you know, once again, it's just so expensive, and I can't even sustain with that. I'm into this land for a lot of money. But my con, once again, my thoughts is working on Buzzard Road, give my, give two of those three lots away to my sister and brothers. And then the rest, if I could sell them also. I'm not pushing the sale. I'm not coming up here and putting a million houses in here. I want to look down the field myself and look at something nice. But, uh, but that's hard, I figure I could do something with. And if you want to hook in the road, we can go that route too, you know?
Yeah, I would have that for you.
Everybody else? Just, uh, it's probably not applicable, but there's a citation here on all the drawings on the site notes. Shoreline District, within two hundred foot of Lake, it's actually two hundred and fifty feet. About two hundred and fifty, I think.
Just the Shoreline District, uh, just right now.
Yeah, we can't go too much further on this until, uh, until you show us maybe a representation of that fourth concept, where you're gonna be suggesting that we intersect Youngs Ridge and...
So that'd be, it would go all the way across to Young's Ridge again or would be a close?
No, no, no.
No. It would go down here.
Okay.
I think that would be true.
Get to a loop and out again. Common, common aggression.
Right.
Access.
But with the grave, they have to come up.
Yeah, just like that.
Yeah, they can't go right to the.
Yeah. Can I walk? Can I walk to? Sure. See, it's just like this right here. The road would come down. I mean, I beat this thing, I had the road coming all the way down here because of the graves and coming up this way, but, I mean, it gets expensive. But right now I can hook onto that circle and we can come just like this and I think we end up in between maybe two lots.
Right in there, yeah.
Just like that.
I mean, what is that circle? That's the Leslie's?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the cul-de-sac area.
It's just a dead end circle, a turnaround.
Of what road?
Langley Shore.
So you separate those and, bring me back in.
So you can kind of see it on that.
So it would change, it would change this lot, so now I have a few more lots on each side of that road and take them out of here. I mean, I'm willing to do it and that's why, like I said, I figured I'd go with something easy. And I don't want to open up a can of worms with all these people, but I want, like, once again, not, not to Pat, so I'm back. I want to be a good neighbor. So if you guys say, "Hey, look at, we love it." Now, if somebody needs an ambulance or a fire, now you ain't going around the whole world, you know? Now you're gonna cut right through here.
So you're looking to put it, to put it off Buzzle in?
Yeah, off Buzzle, just like that, way to that.
Originally when we talked about it, I thought the Langley Road Association may like it because anybody that lives roughly from here would probably be coming in this way. And that would reduce all the traffic coming by these camps, but.
It's a nice, it could be easier coming out here in the winter.
Oh, yeah, that's our potential.
It's in rough shape, isn't it?
But then he has to go, talk to an association, get an association to agree on when to meet, how to meet, and then agree on.
Well, you know, that's something, I need help, I'm not, you know, I don't mind putting in 150% of my time, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be beating on doors and getting beat up. I think if the association get, association get together and I give you a plan and that's all, but they don't.
Like I said, I mean, it's, I can, I can, I can, I can let them know tonight.
Yeah.
If there's a proposal out there, that could be a possibility to see if they're interested. I mean, two of the officers of the association are here year round, so.
So we would involve the cooperation of Lot 26, yeah.
The land was at Benjamin?
Yeah, so he'd have to, would have to acquire right of way to, to connect back to the.
He owns it all the way across, right?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't think there's any provision for that right of way to continue. It probably just ends with that.
I think that, I think there's, no, I think there's a couple of houses at the end that have, are in that same position.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, this.
Yeah, that one did, yeah.
I, I think it'd be, you know, as a land developer, it'd be awesome, just, just for the, for, you know, just for the, like I said, just for emergencies.
Would we have to deal anywhere in there if we were to extend that? How close are we to the water?
Oh, you'd be far away, you're not even close.
You're only 250?
Oh, one that.
500.
The only downside I see is the people living in these last few lots, I got a nice, quiet, dead end road, now it's gonna be a main thoroughway.
And that's what Ken said to me, so I said, "You know something? I ain't opening up a sweeping giant," you know what I mean? But it's just food for thought. If you can put the policy together and say, "Look at it."
I'll mention, I'll mention it to them, they, they, they're bored to me, but it'd have to go in front of our annual meeting, which isn't until July. Unless, unless they, they call a special meeting, which would be difficult because almost everyone's seasonal.
Well, like I said, the only, only reason why I'm here now, I mean, my brother's okay, but when you give somebody something for free, they want it yesterday. And, and, and that's the only reason why I'm doing Buzzle Road right now. I do have a plan. I'm not gonna, you know, I have enough of you people, I have a nice plan on, on my side too. I've got it with me. I don't know if I wanted to really rock you, rock anybody, you know, it's, what, what it looks like. The other, with the 22 lots over there, now there's out of the bag. I do have a plan here to show you. But, but I just want to get my brothers off my case, once again, something for free, yahoo. And they can drive, you know, their four wheels will come down to my beach for now, but, and there's gonna be no beach rights from, on Buzzle Road either, you know? So, 'cause I got a limit. While I'm up there living, I want to see a nice clear, you might see a house in the water. And I'm not gonna say you might not see one house off to the side next to the, the Horns family there, but that's my goal, Mike, you know what I mean? If you build seven houses within a year or two years, I don't think it's gonna happen overnight, but, so hey, you know what I mean? But on my side, you might, you might see one in the water next year or the year after, and that's my goal. But I want to get it approved now, now for the family, and it's gonna be a family compound. I've had people approach me to buy that for boys here, they want to go up to scare my man. I even asked Ken about it. I said, "I don't even, you know, they said, "No, I'm not doing that." But I have, I've had people call me to do different things on these lands. They said, "No, no, I'm not, God, I respect you people. I'm in your backyard, you know?" Like the Horns and, and Robin Ham, I got to know a lot of people up there. I'm not, everybody's all the other, I'm not gonna go. I give my card, or somebody give you guys a card and call me 24/7. So Horns, I get pretty friendly with them the last two or three years. I felt like I've been up here for 20 years, I can look at my, when I bought that. Anyhow, she calls me one night and I said, "Everything okay?" She goes, "I gotta talk to you. When are you coming up?" I said, "Oh, come on, right now." I don't, I can't, you can't do that to me, but I took a liking to them because I enjoy people. And I met her mother, God bless you, she died last year. I helped her bring her out of the house, you know, I get myself into. But, so I go up there and I said, "What's going on?" She goes, "Why is it, you always talk about doing, asking me to do anything on your land." I don't care if you cut it, block it, no matter what you do." I said, "'Cause that's how I do things. I want to be a good neighbor." And, and it took off, you know what I mean? But that's how I do things and that's why I'm here, getting a blessing from you people. And, and that's how, that's how it is. And then I talked to the guy Pat, I said, "You know, I'll put the off in the dig. It's gonna be more money for me to build the road going through." But he guys are gonna say, "Wow, this guy's doing something good, he's giving back to the community," you know? So I like the concept, but I just, like I said, I didn't want to open up a sweeping giant here. And like, and Ken said, I've been meeting with Ken, he's been helping me a lot, and he says, "Yeah, that's, only those two people might, you know, might not like it." Well, the last house, it ran a house on the lot, the guy Pat that I, I talked to on the phone and.
Number 26?
Yeah. I talked to him, I said, "You know something? Don't panic." I said, "Before I do anything, I'm coming to see you in Conkey and my ship, because that's how I do my projects. I'll show you everything I'm doing and I'll put it right and whatever." And then like Ken said, "You're gonna open up an ambulance here," I said, "You know something? Maybe I'll leave it alone, but it's just food for thought." I'd love it if I was in your issue, you must live, you live halfway there. I've seen you in the yard. 'Cause I drive around all the way. It's all good, it's never a day. I was up in tree. But, so it's just food for thought, but I don't want to, you know? If I can get at least the Buzzle Road approved and we can design it and don't just do the, the three lots I'm gonna give to my brothers. So hey, if it takes me till July or August, we gotta leave them. I just want them off my back, you know what I mean?
So if we, and I guess I'm talking to you, Ken, for a second. If we were to, let's say, give our thoughts about doing one of two plans for Buzzle. And then he gets started with the idea that potentially down the road, there's a chance that we may have to change perhaps the last two lots. And then put a road in and then perhaps put those two and maybe another one or two more on that other road going back to Langley Shores. Is that a doable thing?
Yeah, ideally, before they come in for subdivision, pre-application or something, he's got some guidance to figure out it's doable to come in from Langley or it's not. So that at least would probably keep the first five lots unchanged as far as test bit data and locations, uh, site visibility data for driveway entrances, all that data would all be there. This would just be the only thing that may change out there, so that would be the roll of the dice. They would have to, that they've engineered something that they're not going to do.
Langley Shores is currently private for waiting.
Yeah.
It's doable for me either way, you know? I just don't want to be the bad guy, the one up there in the neighborhood, if you get, if you get wrong with it.
Everyone wants to know what, what the plans are, I mean.
I mean, if I lived over there, I'd say, "You can't, you, son, this guy's a dizzy world. I wonder how that." It's a square ways around that old loop to get, you know, if you, you know, if you, I don't.
I know, I do it every day.
So I, I like it, but once again, and I said I wasn't gonna bring it up, I just, I'm putting it out there because I think it's awesome. I think it's, I think it's a good idea. And once again, I'm not gaining nothing from it, it's an expense for me, but.
So the other big question is sort of cluster versus regular subdivision. And whether or not, like Bob was saying in the beginning, the cluster and then the acreage behind the houses is part of association and then the people on Buzzle sort of control that land behind them.
Well, just to the back of the lot, man. Just to the back.
Well, then if you to the, if it was a cluster, it would be the back of the open space.
Well, yeah, there's, there'll be another line, it's gonna be this line.
So if there was a cluster, yeah, everything would be.
Yeah, there's another that line, so yeah.
And then the association and, and these folks would have control of that open space then?
Yeah, right.
Or?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have it so the association, I have to draw up an association, you know?
Or if it's a straight subdivision and then you would essentially control?
Right, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll be on, in a perfect world, like Ken says, dealing with people. I like the first concept, but now I have more control. I could put, I could put something in, in the deeds and they get to cut the trees in between. Especially if we're gonna put, hold off on those last two lots and have the road loop through. I like that. And that, now the new lot line's gonna be right at the end of the lot line, right at the end of the lots. And eventually when I get my side approved, all that's gonna stay natural, it's gonna be open space. And then my side will have control of, out of all that land. And the only thing I'm gonna do is go in there and finish stumping it and grass it, so it looks beautiful like it did on my side, you know?
I was surprised looking at the map for the cluster that the open space isn't bigger. Is that right?
Well, there's.
Because of, is it because of the property, the?
In between, yes.
And normally you would take up 15% for the road, but in this case, we're not building a road. So that's, so it's actually acre for acre, you know, so if it's a one acre lot, it'd need one acre of open space.
I can make, I can make one work and I can make two work. Ken, I think, likes to use three or whatever.
And nobody likes three.
No, I'm not doing three here. You gotta say that, I will, I'll probably have to.
It's like a trailer park.
Because I'm gonna look at it.
Oh, sorry.
You got the houses on truck, you gotta look at these little old houses, it's just.
Okay, so we can agree three's gone?
Down to two or seven.
Yeah, but two and then the extra, we forgot the three.
The road option, three's just been replaced.
So I guess my, I guess the question that just pops into my head is the idea of the potential road again. Would you be able to do it with the plan that you have for the, for number one?
Yes.
Because you don't have space between the lots.
I have some more frontage, um, so I can get a 50-foot right of way.
You can between two and, well, five and six, six and, yeah, I guess it's five and six.
Yeah, uh, five or six, six or seven.
We may have to make one lot a conservation lot or open space and, you know, to, to make the math work. But I, but I think the frontage, I should be able to get that 50-foot right of way in there.
And I'm willing to wait till July if we have to. Let's do baby steps, so everybody's.
Yeah, I'll bring that, like I said, my husband's treasurer, so he's one of the officers. And I'll, I'll talk to him about it tonight and he can talk to the other board member, the president, who, who's here year round. And, and actually if Patrick is the only one that doesn't, doesn't, he may be the only one that, that would have a say anyway, because anyone else, he's the one that owns that last lot on Langley.
Yeah, we would definitely.
Now, he could mix it up. Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just with you. I'm, I'm gonna probably go and see him, like, next week. I'm gonna call up. I told, I like, I like it, I like getting people, all the neighbors, here's how I do it. I get all the neighbors, I go and sit down with people before we go to any one of the boards. So now, instead of everybody beating the doors down and worrying people out, they know exactly what's going on, you're gonna cut the people in half. Maybe down to a third, okay? Nobody likes change, or he's gonna try to kick us, I understand that. But that's what I'm gonna do and I'm gonna go see Pat. If I gave my word, you don't know me, I don't know him, I talked to him on the phone. And I even gave, I even said to him, I says, "If you want, give me number, I'll sell you that, I'll sell you that 40 something." If, if that's what you need, I want to be a good neighbor. That's how I love the world.
I think that, I think that the only thing that the association may, may ask is, and this, this may be a moot thing too, because if, if, you know, who, who would take care, who would maintain the road during the year?
Well, once again, I, I asked one of my lawyers, not up in here, because I'll be breaking into it. If we're gonna go that route, then I'm gonna have to get deeper into it. But it would be part of Langley Shore, you, you, if anything, you give everybody a right of way if you want that. Or you just make it, well, it's gonna be Langley Shore road anyhow, you're gonna extend the road out to there. So you just extend, you guys in the association, you just have a right and they have to plow up to here.
So they, so we would take, we would take over the, the plumbing and the maintenance and all of that. Because then I think that would be a big thing as far as what they might want to do.
Well, that association would also potentially pick up two or three more feet too.
Oh, that's, we got, that are gonna be moved and.
There you go.
Building and that. I'm gonna have, I think if I remember the plan, I might have it in my truck, I didn't take it with me. I think there's four more lots.
Four lots it would be.
Yeah, because I'm losing, I'm losing one over here, now there's four over there. And, and to make it work, without moving all that, I might go buy a little land from Dennis Shandert.
And he's looking to sell.
Yeah. And Dennis is like a brother to me, he's my, he lives in Pittsburgh, we work together. He's been trying to size the land. I'm not interested right now, but anyhow, whatever happens. But I didn't get a piece from him, but I can make it all work over there, you know?
Okay, so they become Langley Shores, we be responsible, we pick up four more.
Yeah. At least.
Dees paying.
Right, right. It's on the list of Dennis, I gotta pay his dues. Good guy. And another thing, trust me, I'm ready to put him in the electric chair. He's my, my daughter's grand, uh, grand, uh, grand, what do you call it? Godfather. That's how we go back, you know? I love Dennis, but, oh my God. But, uh, he wants to develop the world, he's starting with Dennis, "Okay, when you're ready, just, when you come down a little bit, go up enough." You know, probably 10 million dollars, you know? But anyhow, plus mine's gonna be paid over to the circle. Give me a brand new road, right?
Yeah, we pay then the grave, they have to exceed like 10%. It's not, you know, to, to get our graves to work to get down there, it might, may not, um, but that's kind of standard, but, you know, Young's Ridge and everything else, it's probably like a 15% road back.
Well, yeah, Young's Ridge, well, we all know that, but that, my, my new project, I'll be laying it out right now, because I spent a lot of money. It's already, it's already on plan, all the engineering's done, but, to sell it works, but the grave, nice. As a matter of fact, I grabbed the driveway coming down, it's pretty close to the grade of the road if, if, when I go to give it approval. So I can drive up and down there, plus work on the, you know, down the wall and stuff, so. So I already did grab the driveway, so if you drove down that driveway, that's gonna be the grade of the road, believe it or not, it is nothing, you know?
So you're on from Option 3B to Phase 2?
Uh, potentially, yeah.
At least the driveway part.
The road, driveway, driveway, currently driveway.
Actually, another question too, couldn't he, he could carve out, how many of these could he carve out without doing a subdivision?
Seven.
Without going through the process of them?
Well, you've got the, he can gift to his families, uh, he can create the lot every five years. By the sounds of his family, he could probably do this whole thing without subdivision review.
Over a period of time.
No, you can gift out to your family and that's not dictated by the every five year thing. He has to hold it for the first five years. But if you're gifting to blood relatives, and I, I, there's a few other family members too, it's not considered a lot. So if you had 10 relatives you wanted to gift to, you could give out the 10 and there's no lot there.
But that's the same thing, that's, that's.
All right, so what else do we need? What else do you need from us tonight?
Well, yeah, I guess if I, you know, like, if we come before a little public hearing naturally.
Yeah, if you got a site visit, you doing a site visit?
I'm doing this one. Are we doing it at this point, Tyler, or are you?
Um, he's really looking for Concept 1 or 2 so they can figure out where to put, uh, test with datas and stuff. He's so excited to get you out there before it snows and gets any colder. I was thinking about that.
Bring a lot home. Lot of grass, everybody pulls on this, "How you gonna cut this?" Oh, Robin Ham, you guys must know Robin. He's been cutting, so Robin, you did a big memorial, he goes, "I know." But, yeah, whatever's good, you know? a big employee, goes, I am, but, uh, yeah, whatever's good, you know, I'm gonna give you guys my cell phone, call me twenty-four seven, you have any issues, and I, I make things right, like, uh, Ken knows what kind of work I do, and, uh, like I said, I'm, you know, treating it like, uh, like I'm working for you guys up there, so.
But I, I think your preference would be concept one, and you would control the, such as a open space or conservation subdivision, you'd control those.
And, and if you need.
Fifty foot in between the lots, you know?
You know, they're with concept two, they don't own this land, so they're gonna be less likely to be out there cutting, with concept one, they're gonna assume, I own it, it says something blah, 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 up trees, whatever, you know, and it's all going, and then they, let's see, ask for forgiveness for subdivision.
Well, it's gonna change it now, if we end up going with the road, if I can get, if I can get it right now, so I could eat, let's say, the first five lots, coming from, from the, who was that, lot one down the road, is that what, from there up the, well, i- i- in this case, why not all seven lots, and, but I, I just can't do anything with these last two lots till we hear from you, because now we get till July, I get my family off my back, go see Ken, do luck, build a house, and, uh, and I'm not gonna do anything with these two lots until we have meetings, and you guys give me the blessing, maybe no go, and we keep what we have right here.
Then you could just come back for a redivision of the subdivision provision or something.
Right, and I'll spend the money, I could spend the money to further, well, what I'm gonna do, I gotta think about this, like, I mean, I spent, I love them daily, but I spent a lot of money, thirty, a lot, a lot of money, thirty grand, so that's why, that's why I'm here with the blessing, I'm out on the trunk here with all kinds of, I, I love Kenny's money, but, uh, at the same time, maybe.
Three years I've been dealing with him. So, thirty years.
With me, you said you wanted to move to California, now's your chance, so if, maybe we can go with this, based on, which I'm not gonna shoot myself in the foot, if I wanna do something, get rid of three lots from the family, uh, well, I get these first five lots, I ain't gonna do anything with the last two, until we get the blessing, whether we're gonna put the road in, you guys say, yeah, we like it, everybody's on board, they like it, now I can look into legal to extend it, the legal, uh, mumbo jumbo, and then we could, then I could have, uh, Ken, I mean, uh, Brad, now you can say, look, let's spend the money, uh, I gotta buy a little land from Dennis to make it work, if I remember, maybe an acre, gives us two lots going on his land, and then I can spend the money on the road, I gotta get the blessing from you people saying, do love.
If, if we go with the seven, I mean, you can do the test bits.
There you go.
And you, you know, don't use the last two, or, or lose one of them, and that's not the end.
I'm gonna lose, I'll probably lose two, but I think the other road, when you're talking a thousand dollars, maybe something like that, you know?
But we can probably get that, figure out where the road needs to go.
Yeah, but you know.
Spread those lots out, cause that open space is, you know, we've got it all symmetric, you know, we can make it.
I think when you get this approved the next four or five years, you know what I mean, but I'm, I'm serious, like I said, you know, my sister-in-law is a shock, you guys gonna meet her, I mean, you know what I mean, when you get in some of them.
You know, this meeting's live.
She's watching. Okay, so this, that's the first shock that's gonna be in the lake. She's a shock, just meet her sometime, so, hey, she's in Florida building perfect, you're gonna call me, yeah, here we have, bring a fly, pull his teeth out, they're sharky sand over there, once again, something for nothing, let's go, you know, so, and, uh, you know, I do have a plan, I got nothing to hide, and, uh, I do have a plan showing the twenty on my side, it could be lots, could be eighteen, and, uh, and like I said, if somebody came into the, we're gonna buy well for all the twenty lots, I'm not gonna do it, you know, I'm just not gonna do it, that's, that's my goal, I go up there, that's my peace of mind, and my little brain kids come up, and, uh, and, um, you know, and I'm not gonna say I could die tomorrow, my wife's gonna sell or whatever, but, uh, that's a chance we're gonna take, you know, so I wanna deed my five little brain kids something before I die, and I wanna give, make a couple lots apiece, and, uh, you know, they're only, you know, only two little, two, six years old, so, but that's my goal, that's what I'm gonna do, so, and once again, I like that concept of grass, and like my wife says, you know, the greatest, two of ours, because the money away, what are you doing, spend the bill on eighty grand, or see, now she's got me thinking, you know what I mean, but she did say, if you buy me a big lawnmower, like those John deals with a cat, she'll cut it, respond to something, right?
Yeah, conditioning, so.
In a perfect world, so you guys know, I got the house on the top, and once the road's approved, uh, for the twenty, eighteen and twenty, now I can build a lot on the water, if my son wants to build it, I have no intention of selling it, and if my wife was like, do we wanna get down there, so we'll build a house down there, I'll have the best of both worlds, so, and the road will be approved, yeah, drainers should be working, and, uh, trust me, when we had the rainstorms, storms, I was at home crying, I drove all the way up there, cause I, I, I'm protective, and, you know, and how people can be.
Someone's like, it's not.
And I'll, I'll make it quick, I know how people can be, just because I'm from Mass or whatever, I know there's some big men people out there, I'm not one of them, I'm gonna treat it like, then, then, as if it was my family, but, uh.
So, can I just add too, so kind of run along the trend about you a couple minutes ago, the idea, but the cluster is nice because it sort of guarantees that there's a piece of land there that's not gonna be developed.
But, but it's gonna, it's gonna be all, it's gonna be all, um, it's gonna be all the space no matter what, because I'm at it to my.
What happens when you're not here anymore?
They can't touch it, it's gonna be an association.
It'll be in the deed, it'll be written in the deed.
It's gonna be written in the deed that that land right there will remain under the.
Yes, yeah, if we go with the regular two and a half acres, the lot line's gonna be at the back of them lots right there.
Right.
That, the open space starts right after that, so no matter what, they can never touch it, now it's gonna be the whole piece, that.
But that's keeping somebody from down, I mean, that's not like.
Because that land's go, I mean, it's my land.
So, that'll become open space for the other subdivision.
For the other subdivision.
Yes.
So, that will have restrictions and deed restrictions.
There you go.
It's not a problem, uh, or a concern that somebody's gonna be out here doing something, it's in between the house lots would be my concern, that's why the second concept seemed guaranteed.
I'll make it work, what are you gonna help, um, hundred fifty foot lot, right, or two hundred, two hundred?
Two hundred.
I could make it.
Really, you're gonna do it to the same thing?
Even a hundred fifty feet would work, what I could do is if you build a ranch, or, or, um, or, uh.
Well, that's all you need to build, yeah.
Yeah, ranch, if, if you wanna put two or three car on it, and if it's too rocky, then it's gonna design the house, or it goes off the back, you got a L-shaped ranch, or,
Or a two hundred feet, and you've got your.
Oh, I can make it work.
So, you lose fifty to the setback, so it's still a hundred fifty, yeah.
What happens if something happens between phase one and phase two?
So, uh, what do you?
Phase two doesn't get done, stays as a single lot.
Right, right, that's why, while I'm alive, and I can control this, I mean, my son, my two daughters, they're, we're a good family, we respect people, and that's why I'm here, but, uh, no matter what, it's all gonna be protected, like I asked Ken, do you want me to put it in the association, I like putting it in conservation, you know what I mean, but I don't know how you guys do it up here, this way, everybody's protected, you know what I mean, cause I know how people are, there's something from people, they wanna come up here and take over, you can't, this ain't their territory, you know what I mean?
We talked early on, the tree river's being involved for the total area, or something, managing or something as well, to, uh.
And, but the only thing, if I give, whoever gets it, I wanna be able to control, like, all the grass, I want the grass to be taken care of and cut, you know what I mean, so like, conservation, a lot of conservation, you can't, I will, then it goes to, I wanna be able to, I want, so when you drive around, and that whole area, it's all grass, it's like you go off, well, it's, it's nice and clean, that's why I wanna have a little bit of input, I wanna be able, because of the money I'm spending, even up behind those buzzing road lots where it's been stumped, that's gonna be all grass, it's gonna, I mean, drive in there, do me a favor, just drive in my driveway, and I do have a sign, it's gonna be up, I have a nice post with a sign, they haven't yelled at me yet, the hell, I don't have an address on my house, so if I'm gonna have a heart attack over this, how are they gonna find me, so I had a sign, eight, seven, six, it's gonna be up on a post, so, but if you drive, are you leaving?
So, I asked you, um, you're gonna be in trouble.
So, so I guess, you don't have a concern whether you go cluster route or the regular route, so, I, I guess I'm a little, we're not looking to make a decision, you guys then can go forward and say, okay, do you wanna do, uh, one, or do you wanna do two, is what it comes down to, it seems to me it's more your call than our call.
Well, well, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna spend a few more bucks with Brad here, now, I'm, I'm gonna look into that a little bit more, it ain't the end of the road, it ain't like we're doing engineering and stuff, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna tweak it out a little bit more, now that I have a good feeling what you guys want, uh, between one and two, I'll have it done in a week or two, so when we come back for the next meeting, we're all aware of what's going on, and I'll try to give Ken his open space, and put the road in there, and I'm gonna see how it lays up, so it's either gonna be concept one or two, cause it changes a few things with the road.
Three D.
What's that?
Three D.
All right, can I thank you?
Uh, thanks, I got it, thank you.
Wait one minute, before, when you're saying, say the thank you, if we chose from this three drawings that you choose tonight, concept two, is that, are you gonna come back with, and see us with a concept that involves Langley Shore Drive?
That's right. And we won't really know what it sounds like.
I can give you some, we can give them something, I can show you a concept right now, what it's gonna look, okay, where it's gonna come between the lots, you know, I don't, I, I already got something close, but to really, well, that's all I need, it is wanna see how it's gonna look, and I can give something to you, that you could show around and say, look, I mean, honestly, if nobody, I mean, these people, these last couple of houses, they're pretty far down closer to the water, Ken, on twenty-five and twenty-six, all of them lots, I don't think any traffic, well, there's no traffic's gonna, first of all, anybody all the way around the corner's gonna come up the old way, it's mostly the other way's gonna come this way, but they got some, they got a good barrier between the road and their houses, I don't think it's gonna bother anybody, and I, I, I think the concept's awesome, just for, uh, for the fire and ambulance, and, and just to get in and out of it, snow storms, it's just an easier run to get out, and you know what else you can do, if you really wanna push it, if you have a bunch of private, you can up there.
All you need's one.
It's okay.
One, and, and I've seen that quite a bit, where, uh, private roads, trying to get an easement to widen it out, and this and that, all you have to have is one, and it's not gonna trouble.
Well, the circle, the circle, maybe, maybe it'll be interesting to solve a lot, if, if, cause there's no house on that lot, lot twenty-six, lot twenty-six.
It's changed since a couple of years.
Yes, right, and I've talked to him, and I say, if you're interested in solving, let me know, not that I don't spend any more money, I mean, I spent a ton up here right now, but, uh, but the circle's a lot wider than the road's gonna be, and, and there's another thing you can do, food for thought, make it a one-way, you know what I mean, now, you could make it a one-way all the way around, except for, uh, and, and for the American vehicles, they're gonna get down there, whether, you know, one-way or not, they get the right way to get out of there, think about it, it's, it, it, you can't, you can't, you can't beat it, you'll have people living down there that didn't like it, they'll be going down that one-way too, but you can make that a one-way, so you're gonna come back, go around, and come out that way, but the security, I mean, the fire department, you know, Ken, I'm sure he's coming down to yell at somebody, he's gonna get down there, going the opposite way, or, you know, the fire, police.
Three years.
You know what I mean, so I, it's, it's a win-win for everybody.
Win-win.
I don't know how you got, I don't know how you drive, well, I'm a little bit high sprung, so for me to go around all, every day, oh yeah, forget about it.
Yes, sir, and you don't have, have a choice, so, you do what you gotta do.
So, yeah, as you come down to this lot, uh, I don't know, nine, the road comes to route nine, and then after nine to ten.
Oh, yeah, you can kinda see it right there a little bit.
One comes, uh, it runs through the white line aside, the middle.
No, it was, um, this was the area that Dan comes, and then this was a subdivision afterwards.
Gotcha.
That's one of these, it comes to sack throat, so, opens up.
It's good, there's a lot of trees that are right at that road too, that will cover Dennis' land, you know, but I really do, I like that tying that throat, just like I said, make it a one-way.
All right, sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm, uh, let me just go home, all right, and, um, we'll get on for the next meeting.
We're on, uh, we, we should be December twenty-seven or seven.
How was the twenty-fifth, I don't have the bike presence.
Ah, maybe it could be after that. The, uh, and then we're jumping all the way probably to January, that's okay, should be only one meeting in December.
That's okay, like I said, if I can age your lots, come the springtime, we ain't gonna be doing nothing over the winter, and then leave the last lots, well, I'm gonna give them three right this way, it probably be two this year, I don't know about my sister, could be here two down the road, but, uh, for now, for net share, they'll be the only one they have built, maybe the following year, the other brothers are gonna come up. Are, are you okay with them being able to do the test bits, now?
I don't care, yeah.
Yeah?
So, so it's coming to us, they're just not on.
You guys are okay with us, whether we have decided to go cluster or not cluster, you can still do test bits?
I think, yeah, I think I can figure that out, I think she'll.
And I asked Ken, I go, I've got a couple, uh, brothers up here, uh, actually, state of minds, I asked Ken if I could, wanted to start cleaning up up by the road with all the stuffs and the debris, and the trees are falling down, just, just to keep busy till the weather sets in, uh, so I ain't gonna disturb the lots, like I said, well, you know how I develop land, I go on my side, but I wanna be able to get it going, so I get it always proceeding in the spring, and he ain't have a problem with that either, so, but, um, and I'll, I'll have, I'll have a road coming up for you, food for thought, maybe get the thinking going, give me a lot, I'm off the hook, and hey, if you need till next fall, so what, I mean, this way you can breed them, let everybody think about it over the winter, and, and, uh, it's a win-win for everybody, and honestly, I'm not, I could, I could have this, my heart and soul's on the left-hand side, my own piece, the other side, it's gonna cost me money to put the road, to pick up three or four of the lots, and it really is really worth it, but like I said, I'm gonna be a good neighbor to everybody, and I think at the, at the end, everyone's gonna say, wow, it's great, okay, so I don't wanna be a thug anymore, um, we got enough where to go.
Yeah.
When I come back, so the next meeting's gonna be what, Ken, we're gonna?
December first and seven.
I'll, I'll bring a plan back, and you show them the twenty lots, somewhere around there, cause it might change, might get on to eighteen, it might even hurt me, if I put the road in there, and I, and I lose a few lots on my side, so really, it's probably, it's, it's, it's probably gonna hurt me, well, when it's on.
Yeah, cause the fifteen percent of that road will come out.
There you go, so I'm going from twenty lots, I'm losing probably, I'm, I'm gonna lose lots, so it ain't like I'm gaining on anybody, you know, I know, did I just shoot myself on the foot?
A little bit, yeah.
Well, you still got four extras over here, two of which are gonna be lost on Buzzle, so you have two extra there, and you're losing two in the other one.
But by the time I put the road in and stuff, I'm.
Oh, you're losing there.
Yeah.
That area will, whatever that area is, yeah, cause he'll lose it as open space.
Right.
And it does, density will change.
Well, a couple lots ain't gonna kill me, like I said, everybody's happy, I don't like to show up.
But he's gonna play ball for us if he doesn't.
Yeah, right, right.
So, that would be probably, you know, Leslie, that's probably, find out whether or not you can be on board to cut through with, to get it right away, and that number twenty-six, if your, if the association could check.
But I think you were gonna approach it.
Well, that's right, you were gonna.
Yeah, maybe I should, like, it's really, it's a trial and hope, and, okay, that's right.
I'll, I'll talk to the, um, association officers.
If it's positive, then.
Because, I mean, it's.
Sure.
Sure.
If we're, if we're gonna be assuming responsibility of maintenance and plowing, um, after the road is built, then that's something, you know, if the whole association's gonna have to...
But, you know, it's an opportunity, you're coming up.
Well, no, I, I, I understand, it's, I mean, it's, but I can't, I can't say for them, it definitely won't be...
And it's gonna be big. You know what I mean? So, uh, but, uh, yeah, you know what we'll do if we could, I don't, you don't have to give me a number, it'd be nice if we can get in touch with each other, so I call Pat, because once you break news off the people, he's gonna get a follow-up. I think he's got relatives that live over there, he said.
Exactly, I don't know.
I think he said he had relatives down a few house lots now, but I don't want no surprises. I just will call him, I'll go see him in Conkett, Mass., and say, hey, here's what we're gonna do. How do you feel? Yeah, if you chose to come out of the chat, then what else? I mean, you know, do you wanna be a good neighbor? And I can explain to him, and his house, where he's gonna build his house, around the corner where his driver comes around, it's down low, you ain't gonna see it from there. You know what I mean? You're gonna plant a few trees when we can. It's a no-brainer. Do you wanna be a good neighbor? You just, you know, you know, so I, I, I can meet with him. So this way, when y'all open a can of worms, I'm gonna cover, I'll cover it on this end.
I can give you, I can give you my husband's phone number if you want, in that way. You can, uh, once you talk to Pat, you can give him a call, let him know what your conversation was.
I think I want to get into a heavier plan, then I'll break the road.
And, uh, and, uh, and do that.
Like, I tell you...
He may never come back, we may never see him.
Yeah, you have, um... I took a picture of my, this is my, I had, I just had these cards made, and it's a picture of my daughter's house in the front, so that, and not, everybody thinks I'm a big builder, I think I developed, and I built golf courses, that's what I did, yeah. I had these made for you people, twenty-four, seven, I'll drive by at midnight, yeah.
My eyes are getting tired every...
Keep that, just call me anytime. They got me, no, Ken's always calling me, yelling at me, what's up? All right, you good?
Yep, so good.
All right, so, thanks, guys, appreciate your time, absolutely.
Can you talk to him, ask him how he feels, and then you call me? And I'll, I'll wait to hear from you, then I'll, I'll get Pat involved. Once it come out, I'll show him some plans, and see if it'll, I'm, I'm just over there. Do you guys wanna have a walk? Do you wanna have a sidewalk before the next meeting? I'm gonna bring you a plan of my, it could be four, it could be seventeen lots, I could have lost two or three, I don't know.
I know I did, by two, I just did. I would think just whenever you get a chance, some guy, take a look, give you...
Oh, I'm gonna take a ride, absolutely.
I wanna, I wanna be there, 'cause I just, you know what I mean, I, you know, I just like to be there with people there. I got four wheels.
Twenty-four, seven, you call.
Yeah, twenty, oh, I'm sure, just call me. It's funny, you got four wheels going down to the water, and I don't even know who they are, so I put cameras, I see from my office, I, I, I get, Hillside, I showed them, I put these cameras on my house, so I can see who drives in right in the water, I can see the whole place. Because I was yelled at, I guess May, nobody likes no trespassing signs, so I didn't put them up. So, uh, but there's no biggie, I, I don't think I was just busting them or whatever, but, uh, so I could see who's in and out of there, but you just let me know, 'cause I'm up all the time, you know, I just get away from everybody. I'm up tomorrow, I'm working here, I'm up Saturday, you wanna do it this weekend?
You wanna do it on Thursday, or off Thursday? I mean, Thursdays, uh, they sit there?
Thursdays, thanks, everybody.
Thursdays, it's weekend.
Doesn't work, okay.
Bobby, if you go, I'll go up with you, you know, I can break, I can break Bob with my husband, Bob. And then anyway, he can ask you any questions, he might ask.
Yeah, I can do everything, I, like I said, I've been up there for nine days, I don't know if he answers the area, but, uh, yeah, you, which, I mean, you can see it, hold it, hug it, you know what I mean? You, you see more, it's easier to look at plans, you know, you're looking at. And I'll show you exactly what my goal is, what I like, what I wanna do up there, you know? And if you can round up all the ones to go, just call.
We wouldn't be able to get an official one in though, because we have to put in timing, right?
It would have to be an extra meeting, but, I mean, do, do you do a sidewalk without an application? I don't know.
It would just be a free app.
Okay. Yeah, I could do it as a free app.
Nothing, nothing official necessarily, just a...
All I have to do is put it on the website for like a week.
In a perfect world, Fridays, Mondays, or weekends, I work seven days a week, so, and whatever's good for you, people, but I like to be here, so I can point things out, like, it's explaining what my, you know, what my goal is, you know? And, uh, yeah, we go from there.
All right, well, I'll do that, I'll call.
Yep, so I'm good.
And I'll let you know, and I'll let, Leslie, I'll let you know too.
Yeah, let me know, yeah.
Are you thinking about doing one and showing up? You making a decision, make an official one, kind of, yeah?
If the woods meeting, if a forum's meeting, it's an official meeting.
Right.
That's why I say if you wanna drive by, buzz around, and just kinda look.
It's just Leslie and I, as far as I know.
If it's just the two of you, then we don't need to post it, you guys can do it this weekend.
You know, I'm giving, don't get me wrong, you, you guys are more willing to do your thing, I just like to explain, I mean, what, what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I can peek at it.
Sure, you can drive, you know, like I said, drive with the driveway going down, so I can, you know, keep everything nice and clean, I seat it at any way behind you, every time I disturb it half a day, it was raw the next day, but, uh...
It's one thing just driving a Buzzle road and looking at it, it's another thing driving on his property down the driveway and looking at the phase two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but right now, we're basically concerned with phase one.
Buzzle road.
That's what we're, we're, you know...
Well, we may have to change the name of Buzzle Road, Buzzards Road. He's lost that, we'll just change the sign, it's easier.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Appreciate your time. All right, I'll get back to you for different this, I got the number. Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna wait to hear from you guys, right? So, yeah, all right. Like I said, you call me, I'm here Friday, Saturday, food for thought.
Yeah.
Okay, nice meeting, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks a lot.
See you later.
See you later.
Good game, thank you.
Uh-oh, bye.
He's getting into a very bad folder.
Sorry for wearing everybody out.
Why the beginning? I wanted them.
See ya.
All right, we're to old business, and we're to the timber harvesting, uh, department. And, uh, I don't know, you know, I'm hesitant, I guess, about doing two too much here, since we only have three of us left. At some point, I was curious as to whether or not we could get a, uh, decision tonight, um, you know, about trying to follow the, the state requirements or, um, keep our act and requirements as, as they are. Tom, I know you were saying earlier that you, you had talked to Steve pertaining to what he thought all we might have to change in the ordinance book, you know, maybe that's worth throwing out there to people?
Well, yeah. In your yellow book, you turn to page seventy-two, five nineteen, timber harvesting, the header reads, "The following standards shall govern timber harvesting within the shoreline and resource protection areas." Steve has indicated to me that he sees as a solution to, uh, separate main forest service standards from the way it is now, which he and Ken are, think are in agreement, that currently, uh, timber harvesting operations have to abide by the same setbacks on, uh, buffers on the rural, uh, the wetlands. And what Stephen has been after us to do is to separate out those, um, statutes that are applicable to timber harvesting and leave the wetland protections of the smaller, um, wetlands beneath ten acres in place as the town meeting has kind of told us to do. But I, I don't know, you know, he and Ken and the board might find that there's a more, um, clear-cut way to differentiate between the two standards, um, those that are applicable to building and development and those that are applicable to timber harvesting in regards to the waters. But he just said to me that all, all, that he would be happy with and he would achieve what he wants to in terms of the separation, is to just omit that second clause in that header on the timber harvesting. So just read, "The following standards show governing timber harvesting." So you're not bringing the question of, of any other standards, uh, other than the state standards, I guess that's the way he's perceiving that. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it read, "The following state standards show governing timber harvesting," and then there's no question.
There's no question, it clarifies it.
Yeah. So, we don't have to do that tonight, but I was hoping, uh, as maybe Bob expressed, that we could get a total next night.
But the standards are for within the wetland buffers. The option one, the option two. So if you removed shoreline and resource protection verbiage, then these standards would be all over...
All over the town.
All over town. I was aiming just towards the Landers job.
That was the other thing you were discussing too.
Well, yeah, we do have to pull out some of those footnotes in the Landers job also. We basically, I don't know how many plugs we have to undo, but we basically have to, uh, retract whatever in Stephen's perception and Danny's perceptions are making those wetland buffer, uh, standards applicable to the timber harvesting. I'm pretty sure that there was no intention to make those, uh, more stringent standards apply to timber harvesting, but that's what happened, I'll mention some clarity there. And I was ready to make a case for, um, separating them out, but I don't know if I ran long tonight, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess I've had a little bit hard time, you know, trying to do something without Gavin here. I mean, I, I know, I know that, you know, he's on one side here, and, you know, there's other people on another side. I'm not sure if there's anybody else that's over toward his side, but I'd hate to, you know...
I agree, it's something you want.
Let's, I'm gonna back in here, make, make the decision, okay, I'm gonna vote or I'm not gonna vote, but be able to make his statement, which I think he would make, it seems like listening to him. So I would prefer maybe to hold off on a vote until the next meeting that we have, which is, you know, a couple of weeks away or so.
But I'm thinking as far as changes, it would just be on that Landers job, get rid of that R four, and just turn them to P's.
And so why do you suppose Steve was looking to eliminate that within the shoreline and resource protection areas right there?
Because, uh, well, one thing that comes up immediately is, when you, when you use the term resource protection areas, you're using, you're not differentiating that, differentiating that from active resource protection areas, which are the smaller wetlands and ones that kind of is above, versus the state's, uh, what, RP wetlands, which are ten acres or so forth. So, I mean, it makes sense to everybody, except I would like to insert the word state, and there'd be no equivalent, you know, but, uh, you would try and delineate it.
And then Brett, you and Ken were saying that that would then make everything the same throughout the town.
If you take out the RP and the shoreline, which is what Steve is saying, then you're saying that all timber harvesting is subject to the state's standards. And the state doesn't say that, the state is saying only those ten acre, those ten acres.
Well, that buffer on the...
Right.
Well, can you say that again?
If you take out of the header, and the five point nineteen, if you take out the word shoreline and RP...
Yeah.
Then you're saying that to that timber harvesting, anywhere in town...
You can only do forty percent?
Anywhere in town.
You can only do the sixty square feet basal area?
And the state is saying that these standards apply to the ten acre areas that they've designated as RP.
So, you're, if I'm following you, I'm thinking that you're, you're saying it's probably necessary to use the word state somewhere?
No, that's what I'm saying, no. I, I, I mean, you can use state, but I think it says somewhere that it's the state, but I, it, it, it isn't, the states, if, if you take it out here, shoreline, you're saying those state standards are applicable, applicable to every timber harvesting project in the town. Every, even in the straight rural, even...
Well, that's what the option is, Stephen...
But the state wants you to have those standards only in the ten acre, in the ten acre RP sites that they have designated as RP. That's what these standards are for, is just for those sections.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be, you wouldn't, uh, because in the verbiage that follows, five nineteen, that...
By any one.
That comes out in the, uh, in the verbiage that follows, that you're following state standards. Because none of this verbiage, I don't think, besides the header.
How the chapter one thousand is, is the state, it just says timber harvesting dash statewide standards. For, we have timber harvesting, get rid of the whole sentence, it just says statewide standards. And then it has, you know, shoreline integrity slash treatment, option one, option two.
So why wouldn't we be better off just doing, if we're trying to get to the state standards, assuming we were voting on that and we have decided that, um, why don't we just take the verbiage then and put it in as is, rather than trying to, you know, muscle it a little differently and then end up making a mistake?
So how would you make that separation? Are you, are you, okay, I will, go ahead and tell me where you make that separation, if you think there's a way to do it in the header.
Well, I, all I mean is just say state standards, and then go into what it is down below.
The breakdown of that here.
And it looks like the shoreline integrity, we have exactly, slash treatment, we have